Good evening. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting, and it is Tuesday, October 15th, at 6:00 PM. And I ask that you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'll ask our city clerk to call roll.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glasbell.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Great, thank you very much. Mayor Protem, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we'll go on, on our business. The very first item on our working agenda here is the MADA Day proclamation. And if Bethany Maher would join me in the front, I'll present this to her and read it. This is a proclamation by the City of Montrose for Mexican-American Development Association Day, August 19, 2023. Whereas MADA is a nonprofit organization that was built and formed by the Tortilla Flats community in 1972. The efforts were led by a Catholic priest, Father Walter Smigal, who was active in the civil rights movement and worked with minority groups across the country as a grassroots organization. And whereas, with over 50 years of service to the Montrose community, has a heavy focus on families in need and elders. Being one of the oldest civil rights advocacy organizations in western Colorado, has recently refocused on meeting the needs of the community to serve in a meaningful way and build off the many years of dedicated service to those in need. And whereas, the MADA facility is a constant location for camaraderie and support to Montrose, a gathering place to build a sense of community and a foundation for nonprofits to thrive and succeed, as a welcome place to bring the services directly to the community. Now therefore, we, the city council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim August 19, 2023, as Mexican-American Development Association Day in the City of Montrose, and encourage citizens to join in celebrating this important community asset. Congratulations, thanks for being here. Do you want to say some things about what MADA does and what your role is and who you are?
Sure. So I'm Bethany Maher, and I am the executive director at MADA. And so we've been undergoing some changes over the last three years and very excitedly working on a commercial kitchen that we are in the final stages of being done. The commercial kitchen has kind of three different like purposes. So one is a commissary kitchen for those who have like up and coming businesses, kind of taking their tamales from their home in Facebook and to business. And so we're going to work closely with Region 10 on that project. And then also that we have a large meeting space, so renting that for other nonprofits and organizations, as well as private rental use for like parties and things like that.
Thank you, thanks for being here tonight. Next on our agenda tonight is a call for public comment for non-agenda items. The Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when members of the community may publicly voice their concerns. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please stay on topic and limit comments to three minutes. Also, be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to engage in a discussion or debate. However, the city may respond when appropriate at a later time. Is there anyone tonight who is here for this public comment period? Okay, I see a couple hands, so I'll just go forward and read a little more language and make sure that you understand that if you want to comment on something else that's on our agenda tonight, you would have a time during that agenda item. So this is for comments that aren't about anything on our agenda. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. So that being said, we'll just go in order from front to back of the room. So Darlene, how are you? If you would please state your name and your either neighborhood subdivision or street.
Okay, it's Darlene Mora, 121 North 9th Street, Montrose, Colorado. I'm just here to invite the City of Montrose, the council, the county, everyone to come to our Fiesta this Saturday, August 19th. We're going to start off with the parade, and then a car show, and then the Fiesta there at La Raza Park. And I'd like to see each and every one of you there. So welcome, and I'll leave this flyer for the city to put up on their bulletin. Thank you.
Darlene, what time does the Fiesta portion start?
It starts at 2:00 with the parade at 2:00. And I believe that we put out an email asking any city officials, county officials, if they would like to participate in the parade as well.
Okay.
So we're all meeting at the fairgrounds at 1:00.
I'm just kind of asking so that any members of the public that might want to actually attend the Fiesta would know what time to come down to La Raza Park.
So at 3:00, from 3:00 to 10:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I think I saw a hand from the back corner of the room, maybe for public comment? And your name, and then your either address, subdivision, or neighborhood.
Hello, Jeff Rice, Oxford Street of Old English Gardens. Just here on behalf of MABA, Montrose Area Bicycle Alliance. You guys have been doing some work out at Oak Grove, new pedestrian path, and like some plans for widening that years down the road. I'm just here to really thank you for that. Most importantly, also South Junction Avenue, the new bike lanes on South Junction Avenue are coming through, so that's super exciting. As Montrose continues to grow, more vehicles going to be on the streets, so as we try to get more bikes, more bike lanes, it's just super exciting to see all the bike infrastructure coming. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Okay, come on forward, sir. And again, state your name, and then your street, subdivision, or neighborhood, please.
This may be on your regular agenda, but I'm from Season Subdivision.
Can you state your name, please?
Butch, I'm sorry, Butch Zinsley.
And if you're here, I think that's, we're going to talk about that tonight on the agenda. So can, if you're talking about the Season Subdivision, do you think you could?
The rezoning?
Yeah, can you hold your comments for when we get to that?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, I don't think we have any other public comments in person. I will share something kind of exciting. This is the first week that we have also been accepting public comment via email. So folks who can't be here in person but want to let us know about an event or bike lane can do that via an online submission form. And we did get one public comment today by the noon deadline. And so that person's comments will go in the official packet tonight for the record in the same way that folks who came here in front of us tonight, their information is being recorded, the video is being recorded. So in that same way, for folks who want to give public comment but aren't able to make it here, that's another way that you can have your public comment officially part of the record, but not here. Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. The next thing on our agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from our July 31st Special City Council meeting, and the August 1st Regular City Council meeting, and the August 9th Special City Council meeting as presented in our packets.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of July 31, 2023 Special Meeting, the August 1st, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting, and the August 9th, 2023 Special City Council Meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please go ahead and vote.
It's not coming out.
We'll move on to the next item, which is Item 8, Resolution 2023-13. This is council consideration of a resolution rescinding the city manager's declaration of a public health emergency within the City of Montrose. And our emergency manager, Paul Eller, will tell us about this.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council, I'm here before you this evening to ask for your consideration for approval of Resolution 2023-13, rescinding the COVID public health emergency declaration which was issued in March of 2020. It was presented and discussed at the July 17th work session. Staff is recommending approval, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Okay, then I would accept public comment. If anyone has public comment, seen none.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-13 as presented.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Please vote. Next up, Item 9, Resolution 2023-15, Council Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Filing of a Community Development Block Grant Application in Order to Fund Housing Development Opportunities Within the City of Montrose. And our DAR and Grant Coordinator, Michelle Wingfield, will tell us more about this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed council. City of Montrose staff is seeking approval from the municipal city council to apply for a community development block grant to the city on behalf of Montrose County Housing Authority. The purpose of this grant application...
Oh, boy. You know what, Michelle, for the record, would you please start over? Thank you.
I sure will. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. City of Montrose staff is seeking approval from city council to apply for a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, on behalf of Montrose County Housing Authority. The purpose of this grant application is to secure funding to acquire the Sunshine Peak Apartments located at 748 Cedar Creek Avenue. If you're not familiar, these are the yellow apartments up on the bypass. They currently provide essential low-income housing for our community. By acquiring the property, the Housing Authority will be able to exercise greater control over the long-term maintenance and affordability of the housing units. The City of Montrose aims to secure this Community Development Block Grant administered by the Department of Housing to provide sub-grant funding to the Montrose County Housing Authority for this acquisition. The request is for $2,600,000 in grant funds to acquire Phase 1 of the Sunshine Peak Apartments, which includes 49 residential units. The CDBG program provides funding to local governments to address a wide range of community development needs, including affordable housing initiatives. By leveraging this grant opportunity, the City of Montrose can support the Montrose County Housing Authority's efforts to preserve and expand affordable housing options in the community. The total project costs are estimated at $3,850,000, including acquisition costs, soft costs, and critical repairs. The Montrose County Housing Authority is seeking a CDBG grant in the amount of $2,600,000. This would cover the acquisition. The remaining project costs will be covered by the Housing Authority through debt servicing. And there are no matching, no matching funds are required for this grant. City staff recommends approval by city council to authorize the submission of the Community Development Block Grant application on behalf of Montrose County Housing Authority. The funding will be utilized to acquire Sunshine Peak Apartments and ensure the long-term availability of quality of affordable housing in Montrose. We have Susan Barrientos here with the Montrose County Housing Authority, and she's happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does council have any additional comments or questions on this?
Yes, as a clarification, this is no financial burden on the City of Montrose. There are no tax dollars involved. This is just, we are sponsoring the CDBG grant because we are a municipality, and we're, that private entities can't apply for these grants.
Yes, great clarification. We're simply providing kind of a sub-grant service.
As a pass-through.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? We talked about this and the plans a lot at the work session a couple weeks ago, so not surprised to see any questions. Okay, then I would accept public comment on this if anyone wants to say anything. Okay, seen none.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-15 as presented.
I'll second that.
Next up on our agenda, Item 10, Resolution 2023-16. This is council consideration of a resolution, I was going to read it off the screen, but it's blocked a little. I'll do this. Resolution of the council making a commitment to increase affordable housing units consistent with Colorado Proposition 123. And I will ask our planning manager, Jase Hackwell, and community development specialist, Chris Ottinger, to not so much provide us with the information, but anyone listening, because we just talked about this yesterday morning, so I don't want it to feel too redundant for us, but folks tuning in, this might be the first they've heard of it.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. We did speak at this at length yesterday. Christopher Ottinger provided a great presentation, so I'm just going to provide some high-level detail here for the public watching. Basically, in 2022, Colorado voters passed Proposition 123, or 123, which dedicates state funding to affordable housing and homelessness at an estimated 300 million per year. This funding is dispersed between a variety of programs, including affordable housing developments, land banking, homelessness, among many other things. In order for developers, nonprofits, or others to access these funds, the municipality must opt in to this Proposition 123 and commit to increasing their affordable housing stock. Now, what that looks like is increasing that affordable housing stock by 3% per year, or 9% total through 2026. Yesterday, we discussed how this is calculated, and really, I won't get into the details, but for the City of Montrose, we're looking at 54 units per year, or 162 new units by 2026. So again, the city's not obligated to be a developer to access funds. It's a very, I want to make that very clear, but we do need to opt in for others to be able to access those funds. The city staff feels that 162 new affordable units are feasible by 2026. In theory, one large project could probably take that on, albeit a couple of small projects certainly could. So if that number's not achieved, it's worthy to mention that there's really no harm done to those who access the funds up to 2026. Really, the only pitfall or downside is that we would have to sit out in 2027, and nobody that was seeking funds in 2027 would be able to actually get those funds. But we could opt in again in 2028. So in short, there's minimal downside here. It's getting us in kind of early in the process and being able to utilize these funds and have our housing partners tap into these funds. So as such, tonight, we're seeking, or we're looking toward to city council to consider adopting a resolution to formally opt in to Proposition 123, again, making a commitment to increase affordable housing units within Montrose. So happy to answer any questions. Chris is also here for any technical questions as well.
Thank you very much, planning team. Questions, Mr. Yuliberry?
Do we have any plans on how we're going to address this 54 units per year other than the projects that we've already approved for affordable housing? Does that include those, or are we going to add more to those existing approved units?
It's a great question, Councilmember Yuliberry. I think we'll look to partners as far as accessing those funds and bringing our numbers up. We have reached out to the state to see if we can count our recently approved projects towards that count. We haven't received a firm confirmation yet, so we're still kind of waiting as far as that is concerned. But know that we have several housing partners throughout the community. We have received a lot of inquiries specific to Proposition 123 and specific to affordable housing within Montrose, and continue to build those partnerships to get that unit count higher. So we're certainly have that on the radar and continue to work towards that.
Yeah, we're not talking market rates for affordable?
Correct, correct.
And the state has a pretty specific formula for determining affordable based on area mean income and the percentage of that. It's not something that's just subjective, it's a very specific formula.
Very specific, and it is, again, specific to that low-income threshold. 60% AMI is generally the target, and there's also a homeownership opportunity for 100% AMI. But there is absolutely targets that have to be met to actually access those funds.
So would this look like perhaps a developer coming to us and saying, I'd like to build housing that fits in those parameters, would I be able to take advantage of these state incentives by doing that?
Very much so, and I think that's a great point to make, is, again, the city's not acting as developer or property manager for developments, but we are happy to partner, happy to help people move projects along, happy to certainly be involved from start to finish, and that's the role we would play.
As we discussed in work session the other day, using the technical term of no-brainer, this really is a no-brainer in that there is no downside to the city and only a possible upside to our citizens and the affordable housing issue, correct?
I would agree with that, Councilmember Reed. I think there is no downside, there's no financial, we're not backing it with any money at this point in time. It's simply opting in so others can take advantage and access these funds. If we weren't to opt in, then developers would not be able to access those funds. So it, to put it simply, I think it's a no-brainer.
Thank you.
Something we did mention in a work session that I think is important is that the earlier we opt into this, the more, the earlier we have access to that pot of money. And that pot of money is limited in size at 300 million, and so that's going to be used up pretty quickly if we don't opt in quickly. So that's another consideration for us.
Absolutely. Councilmember Frank, I think, spot on. 300 million sounds like a lot in the grand scheme of things, but when every municipality in the state's trying to seek some funding here, it's a pretty small pot at the end of the day. So this, all in all, is going to be a very competitive process, I think, amongst applicants moving forward. But you're spot on in the sense that the earlier we opt in, the earlier we can take advantage of the funding sources, or I should say, other developers can take advantage of those funds.
Any additional questions or comments from council on this item? Okay, seen none, I would accept any public comment on this item. Seen none, a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-16 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. And that no-brainer passes unanimously. Okay, next up on our agenda tonight, Item 11 is the Rathbone Hotel Asbestos Abatement and Historical Restoration Assistance. This is council consideration of funding in the amount of $556,786 for asbestos abatement and historical restoration of the historic KP Building at 33 South Cascade Avenue. And I'll turn this over to our business development specialist, Anthony Russo, for an introduction.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss this project. Right now, this project has come before you guys several times for a number of different reasons. You know, these historic projects are very difficult. The costs that go into them to restore these buildings are astronomical right now, especially with the current marketplace and things that are going on. So this request comes from a position of necessity to make this project work. When we first got started, the costs were much lower. Right now, the total project cost is sitting right at $6,650,000, with the potential to go higher than that. At the time, when we first gave incentives to this project, we issued initially $500,000. We had the ability to go up to 893. We decided to stick at right around 500, as it sat at 10% of the project cost at that time. We, since then, have seen an increase in cost on that project, and so the applicant, as well as, or the developer, as well as the contract company, Striker, has come to us and said, look, we need some assistance. The additional expenses are really tied to mitigation in the building, abatement of asbestos, as well as black mold that was found, and also the cost of the historic renovation. We're looking at storefront costs, we're looking at windows, we're looking at the masonry work, everything that goes into making this building the historic gem that it once was. There was a lot of damage to the building prior to with the fires that went on, and so those costs have increased. And as they've dug deeper into the building, they've found more and more issues associated with that. So initially, the project budget was sitting right around $4.5 million. It increased, and then was value engineered back to 4.5 million, with today, the new construction cost sitting at $5.1 million. The asbestos and mold mitigation is sitting at $215,000 of that. The total project ask is sitting at 12.66%, and we're looking right now to approve 556,786 additional dollars. That would be paid through our ARPA funds that were returned to us from a previous project. So that's where we stand today. The applicant is here for any questions as well. So, Mrs. Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate that clarification. I think there was a question before this came tonight, that where are these, which funds would we use if this passes? And the answer is, we would use the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds allotted to us by the federal government. And we had previously earmarked those for a different project that isn't, doesn't look like it's going to happen. So these were made available. And the advice seems to be that ARPA funds, that cities are hearing, is that ARPA funds should be spent before the end of the year. I'm unclear on if that's a rule or just advice, but you're nodding.
We're trying to spend them before the end of the year. We don't have to. We can spend some moving forward into the next year, and it's staff's recommendation that ARPA funds are appropriate for this project.
Thank you. Okay, we have our guests here tonight. Do you guys want to just quickly introduce yourselves, and then I don't know if you have anything to say, or you want to just take questions?
Sure thing. Can you all hear me?
Yep, there you go.
Thanks for having us, Madam Mayor and council members. I guess I can move this up a little bit, make it easier on myself. Anthony, I think you've painted the picture really well. The more we've dug into this building, just the more issues we've found, and...
Who are you? I mean, we know, but for the record...
Sorry, I'm Clay Vales. This is my partner.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jay Raible. I'm Clay's partner in the Rathbone.
Thank you.
And we are developing the Rathbone Hotel. We've been at it for a year and a half now, and finally feel like we are at the bottom of the barrel in terms of, you know, finding the issues of this building. The framers are starting next week, so we've largely demolished almost everything, including the asbestos abatement finished last week, which revealed some more structural damage. And so we've continued to find things, but again, feel like we have found the bottom of the barrel in terms of scope increases to this project. So we understand that we can't come back again for another ask, this is it, and we're very clear on that. We've increased our equity investment into Montrose to 2.25 million into this single building. We're also borrowing 4 million in debt. So we are, again, very committed to this project and making it happen, and feel like our investment speaks for itself. But just where we are, what we can actually charge for hotel rooms, you know, we need help. Project costs are almost to $400,000 a room, and if you look at what hotels in Montrose have sold for, i.e. the replacement cost of a room, that's around $100,000 to $125,000. We can't... We can't charge four times more than our competition, and quite frankly, don't want to. We think that would be prohibitive to tourism downtown, which we expect to be in the 12,000 to 14,000 per year range from the 17 rooms at the Rathbone Hotel. So, that's what we want to do. We want to bring more people downtown, support more businesses. We have quite a few we've already planned to partner with on welcome gifts and things like that to the hotel, and we really hope to be an immediate add to the economy with all the additional bodies we'll bring. So, thank you for having us. We're happy to answer any questions from you all or the public.
Thank you very much. Council, comments, questions?
I have a comment.
Yeah, well, for either Anthony or the team here.
This would be a comment. Would you rather wait till after questions for comments, or...
Sure, maybe we'll go with, since you opened that up, maybe we'll stick to questions for a second and then come back around for comments. Questions?
I do have a question. We are considering another agenda item that will push back the closing date for the old City Hall. That will free up a little bit of flexibility for you as well, will it not?
Yes, and that's where the additional $525,000 has come from, that I mentioned. So our original equity investment was 1.7 million into the KP, and we're up to about 2.25 now, so. But it does not prohibit us from City Hall, just to be clear.
Okay. Comments?
Sure. You know, I'd like to raise one issue that we probably really haven't spent much time talking about, and that is the culture of this community, and the fact that I believe this council and this staff pays a lot of attention to the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Look at our public safety budget, look at the monies that we're now putting into street maintenance and repair, and looking at more in the 2004 budget. But health, safety, and welfare, welfare is one of the three, and the culture of our community is part of the welfare of our community, and we have to protect that equally. And, you know, this building that we're talking about tonight is not unique to the downtown of the city of Montrose. Many of our old historical structures are in the same condition. We've heard time and time again that the citizens of our community want to protect our culture, want to maintain our culture, want to maintain our small-town feeling, and want to preserve our history. And, quite frankly, a private developer in today's market can't come into today's market and bear all the costs of structural mold, asbestos mitigation. It's simpler and cheaper for them to simply raise the building. And if we, as a community and as a city, don't participate and help preserve that culture and that history, 10 years from now, our downtown will not look like it looks today. And I feel we have a duty and an obligation to protect that. And I think this is, as I said, this is an example of the condition that exists, but we will face this problem again. So, are we committed to maintaining the culture and the history that we have, or are we going to let it go by the wayside?
Well said. I think that this is an investment on behalf of the city to maintain that feel that so many people are attracted to when they say, "Oh, I love the small-town feel, I love the western feel." You're right, but for the city's help, this building may have deteriorated to the point that the city paid money to have the bricks removed once they collapsed, or someone moved in and decided it needed to be, oh, I was going to name some, like, big-box stores, but I don't want to throw them under the bus. So, I'll stick with the idea that, I think that you said it really well, that there's an investment by the city here and some of the reasons behind it.
I would elaborate a little bit on Councilor Reed's comment that not only, we're not just faced with the idea that perhaps a developer would come in and just knock the building flat. I'm also equally concerned about the fact that we would send a message that developers just don't even need to bother coming here. They don't need to come and invest in Montrose, they don't need to come and rehabilitate our older buildings, they can just go to another city. And I think that's a pretty chilling message for business as well.
I'd also comment, even if someone were to come in and tear that building down, many of the expenses we're looking at right here would still have to be covered, because if you tear it down, you still have to do all the asbestos abatement, plus all the other work that goes with it. It's kind of a win-win situation. Many people have moved here because they like our downtown area. I think it's neat, it's kind of unique, and I think this is a good step forward in helping to protect those.
Thank you.
With that, I think we can see if there's any public comment, unless you guys, do you have any other comments?
We don't. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any members of the public wish to speak to this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, then we could have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve funding in the amount of $556,786 for asbestos abatement and historical restoration of the historic KP building at 33 South Cascade Avenue as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote.
Mine.
I didn't get a voting screen.
I have a voting screen.
I think we have a connection issue. Is it all right if we do a roll call vote for this item?
We can do a roll call vote for this, since it's not popping up.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasswell?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have unanimous vote.
And that passes unanimously. Thanks for coming.
Thank you all. Should we stay up here?
I don't know if there's anything you need to talk to Anthony about afterwards, there's certainly...
Okay, I just meant for the amendment on the...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I saw that it was the next item down.
Yeah, you know, I'm kind of a one-thing-at-a-time person. I'm a very linear thinker, so it's not the first time I've been caught off guard with, like, not being ready for the next one. Deal with one, move on.
Totally understood.
Some of that comes with old age, thank you. Look, next on our agenda, Item 12, Amendments to the Contract for the Sale of Historic City Hall. This is council's consideration of proposed amendments for the contract for the sale of the Historic City Hall Building at 433 South First Street in Montrose. And, our city attorney, Ben Morris, will take us through the changes that we asked our legal department to work on, or the language, I should say, that extended this contract.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We discussed this in considerable detail at the work session, but just to make a record of it for tonight, I will just go through and summarize what the amendments are. First of all, the main purpose of this is to extend out the closing date by a year, so it extends it to August 15th, 2024. The buyers for Historic City Hall can elect to close earlier if they give us 35 days' advance notice. It clarifies, although it doesn't create the right for the city to use the property as it sees fit, but it does affirm that in writing, primarily for the purposes of allowing us to grant short-term leases on a month-to-month basis if we so desire. Also, we extend out the contractual deadlines for objections, resolutions, and terminations. There are a handful of those remaining. This just extends them out to approximately the end of this one-year period. The interest rate lock remains set for seven days prior to closing, but, again, closing is bumped out, so this just tracks with that. That's a summary of the changes. I can put them on the screen, but I think you'll find that the written version is in your packets.
Right. That's great. Questions from council on this? No questions? We talked about this pretty extensively just yesterday morning, so there aren't any. So I would ask if there's any public comment on this item?
Could you, insane votes?
Okay, so we are extending the contract for City Hall. We have a buyer in place, and they've asked for an additional year, and what we're voting on tonight is that language that would grant the buyer an additional year. Other than that public comment, anything else? Okay, seeing none, would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the contract for the sale of the Historic City Hall Building at 433 South First Street as presented.
Second.
It looks like the voting is working again, so...
Mine came up.
Great, looks like we've got it working now, huh?
Yeah. Theoretically.
Were we waiting to look at that? Okay, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, council and Madam Mayor. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda item tonight is Item 13, Council Consideration of Ordinance 2637 on First Reading. This is an ordinance amending the zoning district designation of two tracts within the Seasons subdivision from B4 Neighborhood Shopping District and R3A Medium High Density District to R4 High Density District. And I will turn this over to Planning Manager Jase Hopwell.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of council. I've got a brief presentation I'll share here, once that code pops on that screen.
Great, and I'll say that we might have questions, because this is coming to us as not something that we've talked about previously, and it's not been through a work session, because our role here tonight is quasi-judicial, and so you're presenting that information to us for essentially the first time. I mean, we had what was in our packet, and we've all read that, so, as you, I'm stalling for you while you get the presentation.
Presentation, location, location, location.
Fantastic.
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 So we can just start.
We don't. It's great. We learn to roll with the punches.
Okay. Do you think while he troubleshoots it?
Check, check.
Testing.
You know what? We're going to pause and figure this out. This is a really important agenda item. I know there are people who want to listen, who couldn't be here tonight, who might listen to the recording, so we are just going to pause and get this figured out, and so, sometimes these things resolve themselves as soon as you take off the pressure situation. So, everyone feel free to stretch, move about, we'll resume in just a second. Now you think we're okay?
Yeah, we're just going to have the lead soon.
Okay.
Perfect.
See, as soon as you say, "Take a deep breath," it all works. Okay?
That's, like I said, we've known to roll with the punches on these. So thanks again, Madam Mayor, thanks again for the public for bearing with us on the technical issues. But yeah, to your earlier point, Madam Mayor, this is a new topic. I will go in-depth on this presentation for the public's sake as well as yours. So again, the item I have before you is a request to rezone property located near the northeast corner of Hillcrest in Miami from B4 and R3A to R4, which refers to high density. The applicant for this request is AMG and Associates LLC. As shown on this slide here, the subject property is outlined in red and actually comprises two areas, kind of two separate and distinct areas. The total acreage is 9.23 acres. This was actually heard by Planning Commission at their November 30th, 2022 meeting. I'll elaborate a little bit as to why we're seeing it now, but the applicant decided to postpone their city council hearing date to actually talk with the surrounding neighborhood about future plans. The Planning Commission did vote at that November 30th meeting with a 4-3 vote in favor. And after the subsequent conversations with the neighborhood, they felt comfortable bringing it forward this evening. So as shown on this slide, we're looking at the existing zoning map for the properties as well as the surrounding area. Area 1 is the property located adjacent to the northeast of the Hillcrest in Miami Roundabout. That's the B4-zoned area, kind of in the pink shade. That refers to Neighborhood Shopping as a zoning designation, and that area totals 4.92 acres. The second area proposed to be rezoned is further to the northeast, and that's northeast of Pennsylvania Street. This property is currently zoned R3A, which refers to residential medium high density, and that totals 4.31 acres. For the request this evening, the applicant's proposing that both of those areas outlined in red be rezoned to R4, which again refers to high density. This is a more specific zoning map of the exact areas, just showing the tracts. It should be noted that Tract 2, as shown on here, the northeasternmost tract, is actually currently split-zoned. That property is split-zoned between R3A and R4 right now, so the rezone would actually resolve that split zoning issue that currently exists. Getting into, diving in a little deeper on the application details, the proposal, again, is to rezone two portions of the Seasons subdivision and associated rights of way to R4. This does cure that split zone, as I previously mentioned. One thing I really want to point out here is the difference between the zoning districts. So the R3A zone district that exists today, that the property is currently zoned, is very similar to the R4 district, with the one exception of density. So setbacks and height requirements are identical, uses are actually very similar as well, and both districts allow for multifamily. The one fundamental change, again, is the density, where R3A could accommodate a maximum of about 15 units per acre, and R4 would accommodate potentially a maximum of 19 units per acre. So about a four-unit-per-acre difference there is really the primary difference. Regarding the B4 zone districts, it has actually reduced setbacks compared to the R4 zone districts, can actually have zero-foot sideyard setbacks. However, it can also accommodate multifamily. So, again, not significant changes there, and the multifamily allowed in that B4 zone is the same that R3A would allow. So again, that difference of 15 units per acre to 19 units per acre. So in short, really, the property as a whole, as it's currently zoned, if, again, looking at multifamily as a development proposal, could accommodate up to 164 units, whereas that proposed rezone, or the rezone request tonight, could have a maximum of 195 units. Shown here on the screen are the rezone criteria. The rezone should not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and the request should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. One thing to note here is you're going to see the section referenced, it's 4-4-29A. That's actually from the past code. This application came in prior to our fairly sizable code overhaul, so I just wanted to mention that. There's no substantive changes, again, that you all saw with that code update process. The new code that this would reflect is Section 11-7-12, but again, no substantive changes from when this application came in to the current rezoning criteria. This is looking at the comprehensive plan, future land use map on this slide. What this reflects is the properties listed as residential mixed density medium, as well as neighborhood center. These districts provide a variety of residential types, ranging from single-family homes to multifamily structures like apartments, as well as mixed-use commercial uses. I dive in a little deeper to the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to read these verbatim, but city staff has reflected that this request does meet a number of the goals and objectives from the comprehensive plan. Some of those include managed growth in efficient and fiscally responsible way. Again, this is a property pretty close to the core, so it would really be ideal from an infill standpoint. It promotes infill and redevelopment in an area well-served by city services. It provides... It provides housing variety and flexibility on densities, and it has the potential to increase access to affordable housing. So those are really flagged directly out of the comprehensive plan, and staff feels that those are met. So based on the preceding information, as well as the staff reports in the packet, staff has found that the proposal meets the rezone criteria of the code, is in compliance with numerous goals of the comprehensive plan, and is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. In conclusion, staff and Planning Commission do recommend approval of the rezone request. One thing I want to mention, and I kind of flagged this early, right at the beginning, is, you know, this is nine months after the Planning Commission heard it. As mentioned, the developer has been in correspondence with the neighborhood about future development of the sites. And the developer and the HOA have actually come to an agreement, this was a signed and recorded agreement between them about some density clustering. This was not a city-approved document or agreement, or city staff was not at the table for this. That would actually require a planned development process and a new city process, hearing process. So, the language from that agreement isn't applicable to the rezone request this evening, so I didn't want to include that for the packet, but I did want to mention it on the front end, just in case members of the public and/or the applicant mention it. With that said, Ben Morris is aware of this as well. If he has anything to add, feel free, but that concludes my presentation.
Jace, we didn't see the plat included in our packet. Could you pull that plat up again, please? So, is my understanding that, looking at that, that Parcel 2 is currently split zoned as both R4 and R3A? And we don't like split zoning. It creates headaches for us and it creates a lot of future development issues for us. So what you're saying is that by, to summarize, by converting this all, rezoning it to all R4, we resolve all of those split zoning issues on that entire area?
Counsel member Frank, that's correct. This would resolve any split zoning, and it's absolutely correct as well that split zoning does create a kind of logistical headache for developers as well as city staff in determining exactly, you know, where density falls and how development occurs. So this resolves that issue for Track 2, as shown on this plat here, which will certainly help.
Just to follow, I'm sorry, Dave, were you finished? Just to follow up on what you said a moment ago, we normally, in a rezone, we really normally don't talk about what the developer's intended use is for the property, only that it is suitable for the particular zoning that we're going to be looking at granting. And so I guess I just want to make it clear that there's a public understanding that, notwithstanding conversations that have been had between the developer and the residents of the area, and as you said, the city not being a party to that, this is not a conditional zoning. In other words, the developer could still come in and request any zoning that is allowed in R4, notwithstanding any other agreement he or she may have made. Is that fair?
Correct. Counsel member Reed, I think that's exactly right. We're not, if there was agreements made, we're not the enforcers of those agreements between two private parties. You could have the example of a private easement between two property owners. The city wouldn't necessarily step in to, again, enforce that. I think the same situation goes here, and I'll look to Mr. Morris if he has anything to add.
Thanks.
I noticed that the Planning Commission, it was a pretty close vote, 4 to 3. And I tried to find out some information off the city council website, and I found it really difficult to get any information. Do you have any idea what the objections of the Planning Commission and timing of them to create this 4-3?
I think Mr. Morris has a comment.
I'm not sure that those would be relevant for your consideration this evening. And to that point, I think I just want to focus you on the code. That's what we're considering. The language in 4429A is what we need to be looking at. The private agreement, we're not a party to it, nor are we the enforcer, as Mr. Hawkewell said. So I think we need to focus our.
Can you speak up, please? I can't hear you. What are you saying?
My mic is on. I don't know why you can't hear me.
Ben, I'm not asking about any other agreements. I'm just asking to the Planning.
So, I think maybe I can translate from lawyer to council member. Can I try?
Go ahead.
So when we're presenting an issue like this on our agenda, it's like a trial, and we're the judge, and we can only consider the information in front of us tonight, the information we're presented by staff with. We can hear public comment, but we can't consider any additional information than what we have in front of us tonight.
That's because of the quasi judicial nature of it as opposed to the legislative nature, which we can do in a legislative.
Did that help understand what the lawyer was saying?
Yeah, I do, but I just, I guess, to my own information, I felt that it might be relevant.
You can't consider it for your own information. You have to consider the information in front of you tonight, and you can ask questions about the information in front of you tonight, and we can listen to public comment, but we can't go and seek out.
So when money were to come up and object at this time, I could take that into consideration?
Yes, because we would all be hearing that objection. We can't go do our own research when we're presented as a quasi judicial. We're acting all together, and we have to all have the same information. So for example, if I said, "Well, I went down here yesterday and I walked around and I talked to neighbors," that would not be okay.
No, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Well said.
Questions? I love just going off on a little civics tangent, sorry. Okay.
I've got a comment to make.
Yes, please.
I guess.
Okay.
I just think when I look at this area, and I'm familiar with it, we have got a well-mixed area of zoning throughout this area, and I think we have a real good variety of different types of housing and businesses down there. So it looks like to me that this would fit in quite well.
I guess this question, I probably know your answer to it because you wouldn't be recommending approval if your answer was otherwise, but are you comfortable that city infrastructure is sufficient to accommodate what they might do at Build Up?
I think I'll start that, and I can kick it over to our city engineer. But yes, I believe so, and I think, again, this is an area very close to the core. It has two primary access points off main roadways, arterials. It's well-served by city water and city sewer. I think infrastructure is certainly there and can meet capacity should a development come in, and I'll turn it over for more technical details to Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. But keep in mind that this isn't the end of the road, so when they do come in with the development plan, we would have exact numbers of what they propose to do, what the traffic impacts are, water, sewer, all those things, and that would all be evaluated to make sure that it does work. But in general, this area is well-served by infrastructure and set up well for this type of housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all reserve the right to ask more questions, but seeing as there isn't one right now, I would accept, let's see, assist hearing or comment? This is public hearing, the difference being I get to hit the gavel. So, now a public hearing, and this would be the opportunity for public to come forward. And all those things I said at the beginning of the meeting still hold true. You can't yell at us or swear or anything like that. You have to behave yourself, okay? And would you introduce yourself?
I am Butch Zensley. I'm a resident of the Seasons on Stanford Lane. I have no objection to the R4, but this high density has got me concerned. Is that going to limit the height of these, whatever they're going to be developing in there? Or is it conforming with the rest of the neighborhood?
It sounds like from the presentation, and I'll just repeat this because I know you had a little trouble hearing, that the height wouldn't be any different under an R4 zoning than would currently be allowed by the current zoning.
I'll be glad to get rid of the prairie dog town.
Thank you for your patience with our meeting tonight and our technical difficulties. Any additional public for the public hearing? Please come forward, and you know how this works, your name and an address or a subdivision.
My name is Sean Wolford. I live at 2124 Oregon Street in Seasons subdivision. I attended all of the zoning meetings and had a lot of questions. If this area is going to be rezoned, which had passed very thinly, and I won't go there because you can't hear it, why didn't it stay R3, medium density? Was that at the request of the developer?
We only changed the zoning at the request of the landowner. We don't.
Which is the developer.
Be the property owner. I don't know if the property owner is the same.
Okay.
We don't, yeah, we don't, the city doesn't initiate changes. The landowner has to come to us.
And we brought this up numerous times at zoning meeting. On this particular property, and I live on Oregon, which I'm not really, I'm not backing up to any of these new, whatever they're going to be, and I understand they could have a height of 30 feet, that's a three-story apartment, flat roof, maybe. If it's rezoned, they're going to be able to have 195 units, give or take. At four people to a unit, that's 780 people that are going to be living in these, whatever they're going to be. Say they have two cars each, that's 1,560 cars on a road. Pennsylvania is a two-lane road. The only exit to Pennsylvania is going out onto Hillcrest. Or they would come through the subdivision on Stanford Lane, which is a two-lane neighborhood road, where people back out into that road to get out of our subdivision. The majority of the people that live in our, my sub, are, I want to say, elderly?
Mature.
Thank you. Mature. Oh, she lives in my sub. This is, for me, this is not a safe development.
Okay, and I think that's about three minutes, although I don't see the timer. So I think, could you, that seemed like a good note to add, to end on, unless you have something.
Right, and as far as police fire, one exit in, one exit out, not good. So I just want to go on the record saying that I am definitely not in favor of this subdivision.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And our hearing is still open, so are there additional people who wish to make public comments during this hearing?
Just one comment to make the record clear. We are not considering the subdivision tonight. We are simply considering a rezone, so the subdivision is down the road at some other point. Just wanted to be clear.
Any additional comments or question, sorry, public comments?
I wanted to interject that also, as Mr. Murphy pointed out, that any kind of development that comes to us has to go through the process as well, where they evaluate access, egress, they check out the road capacities, they really go through this with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that it is safe and able to be supported by our city services.
And that process also has a public input portion as well. It doesn't look like there are additional public comments, so I'm going to close the formal hearing. Counsel can continue to ask questions for clarification or make comments.
I might, if Mr. Murphy wouldn't mind, or city engineer would, you might make some comments about potential traffic and how that would be handled?
Yeah, so anything that comes in that would produce over 250 trips a day, which this would, has to do a formal traffic impact study, and what that looks at is the capacity of the intersections, the capacity of the street, safety of the street, as far as meeting standards of capacity versus not just their traffic that they would be adding, but the total overall traffic on those. Looks at warrants for, you know, turn lanes, other intersection improvements, alternate egress with EMS from a fire and police response, ambulance response. All of those things play into that to make sure that they do meet the established standards. If they don't, their options are to either, you know, improve the infrastructure or to reduce their density as needed to make sure that it can meet those standards. So that all would get flushed out through their design. That gets reviewed, has to be prepared by a professional engineer, stamped, and then reviewed by our staff, which are also licensed engineers.
And that process would precede the, not the change of zoning, but that process would come before a plan that the developer has how they want to use it, right?
Certainly. Yep, yep, so that, because to do it now would be on speculation, you know, you just don't know how many units it's actually going to be. A lot of times when they get to lay these things out, because of parking requirements and all these other things, they can't fit that maximum density on there. So you have actual counts, actual numbers, so they can, yeah, make accurate analyses of what's going on. And that goes through several iterations typically with us at staff, as they kind of, it's iterative, we identify issues, they modify. So usually by the time it's coming to the public, they have a safe one that meets standards. A lot of those get worked out, and then certainly, you know, through the various processes, they can receive public comment and adjust from there as well.
And that would follow through our subdivision regulations, or if they came in with a planned unit development, a PUD, and would be publicly governed by that process?
Certainly, yep.
But is not part of a rezoning. Rezoning, so we go from your department to the planning department, rezoning, we're just taking into consideration the information you presented tonight on our comprehensive plan, the nearby zoning, that kind of information.
Correct. That's exactly right. And exactly to the earlier points, those processes come at a future date, but should not be considered when looking at the rezoning aspect this evening.
Okay. This is a process-intensive discussion.
I have nothing else.
Okay. While the hearing is closed, it looks like council comments are done, so would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2637 on first reading as presented.
Second.
And can you do a roll call vote, Lisa? Because we're.
There it is.
Oh, there it is.
Somebody didn't feed the groomers.
Are you waiting for anyone still? Ed, can you make, is it working for you, Ed? Is it not working? We're waiting for your vote.
No.
Okay, there we go. Okay, thank you very much. And that passes 4 to 1. Okay. Next item on our agenda is Ordinance 2634 on second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Section 1, and Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 21 regarding the removal of snow and/or ice and unreasonable noise. Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So this is our second reading on this item, which means it's actually the third time it's come before council for discussion, so I'll give a brief overview and answer any questions that may have come up. Am my mic working? No. There, is that better? Oh, now I can.
Much better.
All right. So as you say, this is updating city code 9-4-1 as related to snow and ice removal, and also creating and documenting our snow removal policy. That kind of goes hand in hand with our city code. The policy is more related to the level of service that we provide, and the city code complements that in formalizing responsibilities for the city and for city residents. The changes to the ordinance are mostly related to depositing of snow in the roadway, and again, formalizing the responsibilities for the city operations and homeowners or property owners in the city. property owners in the city. The policy, again, is, is related to our level of service and our operation, which has somewhat transitioned into nighttime operations. And the policy would be promulgated into our regulations manual. And with that, there's been no other changes since we discussed this before. It's been, we've discussed it twice now, seems like we've hit every point of it. I'd be happy to dive into any, any part of it. There's a redlined version in the, in the packet that, that helps explain the changes. But if there are any questions, I can answer that. Otherwise, I think we've spoke about it enough.
I would agree. It seems like we've talked about it a lot. And this is a great reminder that if the public might, if they have questions, say, well, does this mean I can't do that? Or does that mean I can't do that? You're always available. The Public Works Department would be happy to answer any questions like that.
Absolutely, yeah. Always give us a call, 240-1480. It's an easy way to get in. Myself as the Public Works Director, or Nick Pridey here in the audience tonight is our Streets Superintendent. Either one of us would be very comfortable answering any questions, addressing any issues as they may arise.
To that point, this may affect some of the folks who are contracted to clear the larger parking lots in our town. How are they going to be notified of this? I mean, I know it's, you're going to say, this is the way we've always been doing it, we're just formalizing it. But is there a way to tell them, hey, we really mean it?
There is, actually. So we, we actually have relationships with them. Some of them even work for us on some of our city property as well. So some of the larger operations, we, we know them in town and have the ability to just contact them. Definitely as snow season starts to approach, we're going to be updating some of our snow route maps, and it'll be a good opportunity for us to approach some of these contractors that, that we're familiar with and, and update maps with them and, and discuss these ordinance changes.
Great, thank you. Any public comment about our snow removal process ordinance update here? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2634 as second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Next on our agenda is Item 15, Ordinance 2635 on second reading. Counsel consideration of an ordinance regarding the cable franchise agreement between the City of Montrose and Spectrum Pacific West LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications, Inc. And I will turn this over to our City Attorney, Ben Morris.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is the second reading of this item. There has been a change since first reading. It was discussed on first reading. We corrected the address of the Pavilion from 800 Pavilion Drive to 1,800 Pavilion Drive. That can be found on Exhibit A, which is the last page of the agreement. I believe we have Mr. John Lee on the Zoom. If you have any questions, he's the representative from Spectrum Charter. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We have talked about this in work session. We have voted on it once already. Any questions from counsel?
I have--
Oh, great, okay. First here, then here.
One of the questions I had was on the complimentary service locations. I was wondering if we should extend that out to all of our city entities? We have a public works area, we, we have the animal shelter. If maybe we would be looking at extending that complimentary service locations. It would seem to me that it would be kind of nice if once in a while we had a chance maybe to hold a work session or something at one of these other locations. And also I had a question on, we have another company that does supply some, I think, electronic services, DMEA. Does this, is there any way it affects their operation, or is this totally separated from that?
I'll take up your second question first, since it's easier for me to answer. With that one, the answer is no. These two are controlled by different law, and they have functional or technical differences. When you're talking about Elevate through DMEA, that's fiber optic. This is traditional cable TV, which has been digitized and can now do other things besides TV programming, like it can carry an internet signal or telephone. But the, the cable TV portion of it is controlled by the Federal Cable Act. So it has a different set of rules that go with it. The two don't compare one-on-one. Your other question, the first one, was more of a technical issue. We did discuss where the city would want to have the complimentary locations, and some of that was dictated, I think, for, by technical considerations. The matter was negotiated out with the company, and at this point, what we have is, what we have unless we renegotiate. So I think Mr. Lee might be able to speak to this. Sir, I hope you can hear me. John?
Yeah, I can hear you, Ben.
Can you address that question from the company's perspective?
Yeah, I mean, we, there are a number of factors here. One, we'd have to look at the locations and see if they're serviceable with the standard drop to begin with. Secondly, the city's already receiving its full 5% franch-- oh, no, you guys are at three. So there is headroom there. Yeah, I think the first thing we'd have to do is, is to see if those areas even service them by a standard drop. And make sure there's no special construction required to do that. And make sure that they do meet the definitions of a city-owned or occupied facility under the franchise. And we could always look at doing that as, as a side letter supplement too, since even pursuant to the agreement, we're doing the complimentary services on a voluntary basis. If you wanted to take this up, you know, via side letter, we could do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I think what you said is, between the two of you, you said, you know, this is what we currently have negotiated, this is what we're deciding on tonight, should we wish to continue having conversations with Spectrum Pacific West about additional service. We can do that, and nothing in this would prohibit us from having those conversations in the future.
One other question, I guess I would ask about is, it seems like our public access channel fails quite often when there's a council meeting going on. I don't know whether that's an internal problem or an external problem.
I guess I would, I believe Elevate is also carrying the public access channel, at least from, pursuant to their franchise agreement there, they have a franchise obligation to do so. The franchise that we have negotiated with the city does have a path forward to upgrade Channel 2 HD, should the city choose to do so. There's provisions in there for timelines and so forth.
Thank you.
Comment?
Yeah.
I, I just have one comment, and I'm going to turn to the City Attorney here to fill in for me. But let me begin by saying I totally respect and honor the right of any and of all of our citizens to comment on what we do as a, as a city council and to agree or disagree with us. That's what we are elected to do, and everyone is not going to agree with us all the time. However, I do think it is important when a citizen makes a comment, they be armed with the truth of the matter and all of the facts before making public comments, either written or oral. In this case, I'm referring to written comments that were made by one of our citizens. And it was said that with respect to what we are doing here, and whether this franchise is to be approved by council or go to a vote of the people, it was said that some, and I quote, "Some outside legal advisor cleared them to do so, and as with so many elected officials, they jumped at the chance to take away your right to a vote." And that's simply not true. And I would ask our City Attorney to please comment on those comments.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. The, the U.S. District Court for the District of Colorado ruled on a very similar issue. This was back in 2001. The case name, for anyone who's interested in looking it up, is Quest Broadband Services, Inc. versus City of Boulder. The citation is 151 Federal Supplement 2nd, Page 1236. The court in that case ruled that the Federal Cable Act has preempted city, the City of Boulder's charter, which would have required a franchise to go to a vote of the people on grounds that if the people didn't approve it, that would violate the Federal Cable Act. In other words, they would effectively have the one choice under the law, but in, in practice, of course, on a ballot, you can vote yea or nay. So without proper grounds, they could violate the federal law by not approving the franchise for renewal. That was the essence of that case. I'm probably oversimplifying it, but on those grounds, we felt that the outcome of that case would also control with our charter, since it is similar to Boulder's, and therefore we are preempted by federal law. That's how we got to where we are today.
Thank you. I would also add to my comment, and then I will be quiet. But we did not, the council or our legal department did not just go outside and find some legal advisor. We engaged Mr. Kenneth Feldman, who is a partner in the law firm of Kissinger and Feldman in Denver. Mr. Feldman is well, well-renowned in the state of Colorado as one of the outstanding municipal attorneys and public utilities attorneys, has the greatest respect in the legal community and in the local governmental community. So it wasn't just some lawyer. And if anybody would like to look it up, you, you can certainly look up Mr. Feldman and see what his credentials are, and know that we got good, solid advice on acting the way we did. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not real proficient in legalities, but when we had our conversation with him, I thought he did a pretty good job of explaining it all. And then, of course, our City Attorney, I thought, did a good job of explaining the Colorado law and the difference between cable and internet. So I think that as a council, we're not all perfect, but I think most of the time we're fairly well-versed on whatever we're moping on.
Okay, I would accept public comment on the ordinance regarding the cable franchise agreement. Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2635 on the second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next up on our agenda is Item 16, City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2636 on second reading. An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of an interest in city-owned real estate pursuant to Section 1-9-2 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. This is the Clear Network easement. I will turn it over to our City Attorney and our Public Works Manager, Jim Scheid.
I think I could take this one. This is also our second reading on this item, so we've talked about this one a few times. But a brief overview is, this is an authorization of a deed of easement to Clear Networks to run fiber underground on city property at the Black Canyon Golf Course. It's near the right-of-way, but outside of the right-of-way. It's actually on city property. There is a map included in the package showing the location, but it's near a roundabout at Hillcrest and Sunnyside, just inside the fence of the Black Canyon Golf Course. The location of the easement is already encumbered by other easements that are for other Bureau of Rec. and for DMEA in that area. And it is not, does not encumber the operations of the golf course. So it's right along the fence line, and it doesn't involve any of the operational portion of the golf course. So city staff does recommend authorizing this deed of easement to Clear Networks. With that, I'd answer any other questions you may have.
Doesn't look like we have any, so I would accept any public comment on this. No public comment, so a motion, please.
I move to adopt Ordinance 2636 on second reading as presented.
Oh, is that a hearing? Hang on. I had already turned my page. Technically, that's a hearing. So let me, let me make sure to cross our Ts and Ds and Rs. I'm going to open a hearing. And that's the only difference I can tell, that and some legal, you know. Here we go. Okay. Any comment for the hearing? Seeing none, I'm closing the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2636 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thanks, you guys, for helping me get through that. Okay, please vote.
We'd like to hear you bang the hand. She likes to do it.
I should highlight all the hearings, so I can--
It's got her damn on it, she's allowed to.
And that passes unanimously. Item 17 is the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout and Backage Road Design Contract Award. And this is counsel consideration of a professional services contract award to Felsburg, Holt, and Juleveg in the amount of $215,211.40 for completion of design studies and civil design associated with the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout and Backage Road project. City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Someday I'm going to find a way to shorten those. It's a mouthful. So this is for the initial design phases of this project. No changes since when we discussed at work session, but I'll do a quick overview for anybody joining. When we designed the Woodgate realignment, as you can see in this figure here, I'll zoom in a little bit. We constructed the Woodgate realignment. As part of that project, we had traffic studies identified to make sure that's going to work, put it in the right location, and also identify the long-range, longer-range needs of the intersection. It did identify roundabout within the near future. They recommended three to five years out. At the time of that project, we approached the landowners to the north, because roundabouts have a pretty large footprint, to see if we could purchase the land necessary to construct that. At that time, the landowners were not interested, that owned those two parcels. Fast forward to now, that land has changed ownership, and they are interested in working with us. So it's a great opportunity for us to secure the rights of way. And in doing so, we've also seen a great utilization of the Woodgate realignment. So it, it works out well into our planning as well to hit that three to five-year timeline to get the roundabout put in. In addition to that, our comprehensive plan has always identified the need or the desire for a backage road coming off, so if this is East Oak Grove here on this map, going straight north there, so people, or to kind of help people get their bearings, you know, like Big Five, Harbor Freight, Office Depot, those shopping centers there. And a little bit to the north, you have Murdochs. Behind there, you have several multifamily apartment complexes. All of those areas are left to try and hang a left onto Townsend without any signal. And as Townsend volumes have increased, that gets pretty challenging. So what people do to avoid that, they end up going around the block or hanging a right, trying to do a U-turn down by like Big O Tire, and adding to more congestion and more problems in other intersection areas. What this backage road aims to do is to give those areas a way to get down to a signal so that they, they are southbound on Townsend, they can get down to the, through the back of road, down to this roundabout, out to the signal, and safely hang a left onto Townsend. This project looks to just construct the southern reach of this. We are currently working with northern property owners on securing that right-of-way as well, and happy to report that they're generally on board, and it looks to be a go as a follow-up project in future budget years to what is being proposed here. So as far as the design goes, it'll take on, a lot of this, a lot of legwork has been done with the Woodgate realignment. This will fine-tune, I know we have actual traffic numbers, and project those out into the future to make sure everything will work long-range, figure out all the turn lanes, warrants, things of that sort, and then all your standard designs, so drainage, utilities, street design, geotech, all of those various elements, lighting. In addition to that, we do have, as part of the development agreement, that was part of securing this land, the city will help with some of the plating and kind of cleaning up the property boundaries around the area to make it set up for development. And the largest of which would be, or that's planned for the area, is All Points Transit is looking to locate their transit center along this roundabout. You know, they've been working over the last two years, almost-- almost three, to find a site. It's pretty hard to find something that's centrally located and large enough for a transit center. This, they're pretty excited about this. Fits that bill pretty well. And so that's a project separate from the city. All Points isn't part of the city, but we're happy to partner and help facilitate that project because it's, we see it as a great benefit for our community. So over the coming months, you'll see some, you know, there's actually one of these properties is still in the county, some annexation, zoning, and then eventually some subdivision to kind of clean up those, those lot lines to set them up for development. For the design procurement, we had, we received two bids. We put them out as an RFP, but without pricing. We, roundabouts are a pretty specialized design. We want to make sure that we have the right team working on it. We're happy to see proposals come from Felsberg, Holt, and Ullvig. They rated the highest. They are the same designers of the Miami Hillcrest Roundabout and the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout, which is underway right now. Once we select, we then go into negotiations for contract price. And they came in actually better than what we thought it would be at $215,211.40. The product itself, so big picture overall construction schedule. So the plan is to finish up 6,700 this year. That will bring that online for a great bypass route as we start to close. It's good alternate to Hillcrest, and we need to start closing Hillcrest intersections. This winter, we plan to start the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout. So that closure would start around January, February, and then run into mid to late summer. And then as soon as that's complete, we would then jump over to the Woodgate and this East Oak Grove Roundabout here. We can't do them all at the same time just because we need those alternate routes around it for those detours. We don't want to have detours on top of detours and frustrate the public. So overall project costs, again, this was kind of an opportunistic project. We didn't expect this to come through this early, so which is great. But in, as such, the funding would be through savings and other capital projects or through a budget supplement, which in talking to finance, is available. Of that 200 and some thousand, we figure about half of that will be expended this year, and then we have a proposal in next year's budget for the balance. If that happened, answering any questions, we're joined, one of the partners here was Delmont Consultants, doing a lot of the on-the-ground survey. It's kind of the best of both worlds. We get the, you know, state expertise in roundabouts and the geometric design of the roadways, and then the local expertise in survey and utilities. Really makes a great team, it's worked well. And they're the same partnership that they've had on the previous project. So we're happy to get a local flair in the project as well. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And all that discussion about the, the roundabout at Woodgate and East Oak Grove, I'm going to point out one thing you said kind of quickly in passing, which is, this is happening after the roundabout at Niagara and Hillcrest. Because I think people hear us talking about this, and they think this is up next. But the roundabout at Hillcrest and Niagara is up next with construction slated to begin this winter.
Correct.
So I don't have a question about this roundabout. I just really want to say that again because every time we talk about this, someone asks about that. You're nodding. Sorry, any questions about this roundabout?
Yeah, I would say, for any citizen of Montrose who has tried to turn left out of that Big Five, or Office Depot parking lot, we're going to love this because that'll be a huge benefit to be able to actually go down to a light and get back onto Townsend.
Okay, would accept public comment about the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout and Backage Road Design Contract. So this is designing it, not constructing it. That'll come next. This is the design contract. No public comment, so would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to award a professional services contract to Felsberg, Holt, and Ullvig in the amount of $215,211.40 for the completion of design studies and civil design associated with the Woodgate East Oak Grove Roundabout and Backage Road project as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote. And you might have to scroll down on your laptop to hit the save button, but don't forget, it's hiding out down there.
I did it all by myself.
I'm going to buy you a mouse.
And that passes unanimously. Okay, next item, 18, Brown Ranch filing number eight final plat. This is council consideration of the Brown Ranch filing number eight final plat to create 17 residential lots and associated rights of way and easements. And Planner William Reese is here to talk about this one.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council and members of the public. I do have a very brief presentation to share. So the Brown Ranch subdivision is located in southeastern Montrose, east of 6725 Road. Filing number eight is specifically located off of the existing Donegal Drive. The site is approximately 10.58 acres in size, and the subdivision consists of 17 single-family residential lots. This is located within the R1 very low-density district, although it is worth pointing out that there is an existing planned development for the Brown Ranch subdivision that allows for smaller lots than ordinarily allowed in R1. Those would ordinarily need to be at least one acre each, but these lots range in size from 0.452 acres to 0.648 acres, which is consistent with the approved plan development. The previous amended preliminary subdivision plat was approved by City Council in June of 2022. All lots do need to meet the minimum lot size as designed in the Brown Ranch Plan Development. Surrounding streets do need to be in place and approved by the city engineer. And easements and utilities, including sewer, must be installed. Here is the subdivision plat itself. As usual, the first page mainly consists of the standard plat notes and signature lines as required on all subdivision plats. And then the second page shows the actual property lines. The plat would also dedicate rights of way named Galway Court and Killarney Lane. This also includes the line and curve data for some of these smaller lines here. Staff does find that the application is in order, and the plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the Brown Ranch Plan Development. Staff recommends approval of the Brown Ranch subdivision filing number eight final plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all final plats. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Doesn't look like council has any questions, so would take public comment on this item. See none. One, if you want to read that long motion.
I'll do it. Consider making a motion, or I make a motion to approve of the Brown Ranch filing number eight final plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the exclusion of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Look at that, you guys got it. Five zero, that passes unanimously.
If you don't know what to do by now, you got problems.
Oh my goodness, now we are on to item 19, ordinance 2638, first reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance on first reading designating the Coors Building at 134 North First Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to section 11-3 of our official code. And Planner William Reese, I am so excited because you do a great job of telling us about these old buildings. Um, let's hear it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bynum. I think this is a particularly interesting one, so. We did recently receive an application from the owner of the Coors Building to designate this structure as a historic property. The building is at least 50 years old, and we determined that the building is eligible due to criteria A and C. The building is significant for its association with the history of saloons in Montrose, having been erected as a saloon and rooming house by the Adolf Coors Company in 1905. And the building, although altered, reflects design and construction elements of early 20th century architecture, including the flat roof with parapet, brick walls, round arched windows with stone sill courses and projecting cornice. Adolf Coors immigrated from Germany in 1868, initially to Chicago, working as a brewer during the summer and a fireman during the winter. He later moved to Denver in 1872 and bought a bottling firm. They began producing beer for sale out of Golden in 1874. The Coors Company would build many buildings to sell their beer, including here in Montrose. These lots were purchased for $2,000 in December of 1904, and John Hecker announced that the construction would begin within three weeks, consisting of a two-story brick building with the lower floor used for a beer depot and the upper floor reserved for boarding rooms, as well as a separate building in the rear to be used for cold storage. The estimated cost of the two buildings was approximately $10,000 at that time. In April of 1905, W.L. White was awarded the contract for $14,000. This here is the 1908 Sanborn map showing the separate buildings. It is labeled with SAL indicating a saloon, and you can see that it says "rooming" on the second floor. Looking at the newspapers of the time, there were rumors that Carrie Linell's, quote, "house of ill repute," unquote, would be moving into the second floor, although I haven't found anything confirming those rumors. That was published in 1907. That same year, in 1907, the Colorado General Assembly passed some of the first bone-dry laws in the state, which would allow cities to outlaw the sale of alcohol. And sweeping bans were soon passed all across the western slope. This would come up during the city elections on April 6, 1909, which essentially became an election between a pro-saloon and an anti-saloon party. The election resulted in a new anti-saloon mayor, known as Dr. John Q. Allen, who only won by 63 votes. Also, eight out of the nine alderman seats at the time were won by the anti-saloon candidates. Interestingly, one of those eight seats was initially a tie. The attorney for the anti-saloon candidate successfully argued that one voter had used the wrong address on their registration, and so that one vote was thrown out, giving the anti-saloon candidate the victory. With the anti-saloons having the majority, Montrose quickly became a dry town. The Coors Company did attempt to make something specifically for dry towns, known as hop ale, which was basically an attempt to circumvent the bans on alcohol. However, the Montrose City Council at the time determined that this was just a substitute for beer that was still alcoholic, and this was banned as well. With the, without the possibility of these beer sales, the saloon was no longer sustainable, and so the building became the Vandenberg Hotel later that same year. This picture is really the only historical picture that we've been able to find. This was taken on September 23, 1909. The focus is obviously on the train, as this is how President Taft came to visit Montrose for the opening of the Gunnison Tunnel at the time. The Vandenberg Hotel can be seen in the background, and you can see that this side has been fairly well-preserved. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to find any pictures of the front. This is the 1912 fire insurance map, where you can see that it's labeled as a boarding house. According to the 1912 city directory, this was the Gladstone Hotel at the time. The building was later sold to James Bonade in 1917. And this here is the 1919 map, which shows the building was used as a junk and hide warehouse, and the rear building housed the Montrose Bottling Works. In 1931, the front was a produce warehouse, and in 1941, the building became the Cassius Pool Hall, which was a gathering place for Hispanic men who were barred from other establishments at the time. The 1963 city directory listed apartments here, and the building did change hands a few times throughout the remainder of the 20th and 21st centuries, and it was finally sold to DNN Realty LLC in 2021. The front of the building does still retain some of the historical characteristics, most notably the central parapet with the metal panel inscribed "Coors." Also note the brick coping along the roof, which slightly projects, and the two sets of paired round arched windows and the rock-faced stone sill course. The first story has been altered, particularly the storefronts and the porch addition. Along the Rio Grande side, you can see the stone sill course continued from the front. Also note the cornice and corbelled brick above the second-story windows and the slightly projecting piers that define five bays on the wall. The window on the far right of the first floor is not original, but the other openings on this side all appear to be. On the opposite side, which is the east side, you can see more arched windows with stone sills. Also note the full-height chimney towards the rear. The shed roof and altered storefronts are later modifications. And then finally, just to show all sides, here's the rear. This is obviously a much later addition, so no notable historical characteristics. The detached building with the bottling works would have stood here, but that was demolished. In summary, staff finds that the building meets all the eligibility and integrity requirements for the city's historic register. We are recommending approval of ordinance 2638, adding the Coors Building to the city's historic register. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
Never disappoints, that was really cool.
You find any old beer bottles?
I don't believe so, not yet.
Any questions about making this a historic City of Montrose building? Doesn't look like there are. Thank you very much for a great presentation. That was really cool. Any public comment on this historic building? See none, would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2638 on first reading as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously, and that concludes the portion of our meeting where we're voting on things, the action items. And we're going to move on to staff reports. We have three staff reports tonight. The first is the sales, use, and excise tax report from our Finance Director, Shani Wittenberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Give me one second to connect. I think we're using Creston tonight. All right, so this is the sales, use, and excise tax collection report for June of 2023 compared to the same time period in 2022. General Fund sales and use taxes collected at 3%. In June, we collected 7.9% more in retail sales than we did in June of 2022. Construction use taxes down 160.1%. Use and auto-use tax down 22.3%, with total collections up 2% and a positive budget variance of 10.7%. Year-to-date retail sales taxes compared to, through June of 2022, retail sales taxes up 8.4% or $920,000. Construction use taxes down 77.3% or $497,000. Use and auto-use taxes down 2.6% or $20,000, with total collections up 3.3% or $403,000. Use and auto-use taxes down 2.6% or $20,000, with total collections up 3.3% or $403,000. Still a positive budget variance year-to-date of 12.6% or we have collected $1.4 million more than we anticipated in our budget process. Public safety sales and use taxes collected at .58%. June compared to June of 2022, retail sales taxes up 7.6%. Construction use tax up 159.4%. Use and auto-use tax down 22.3%, with total collections up 10.8%. Positive budget variance for the Public Safety Fund at 18.2%. Year-to-date, retail sales is up 8.1% or $172,000. Construction use taxes down 5.8% or $8,000. Use and auto-use tax down, is down 2.6% or $4,000, with total collections up 6.6% or $160,000. Positive budget variance through half of the year of 13.8% or an additional $313,000 has been collected than we budgeted for in 2023. Montrose Recreation District adds .3% to our sales tax. In June, we collected $273,705 or 10.8% more than we did in June of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected $1.3 million for Montrose Recreation District or 6.6% more than we did through June of 2022, which equates to about $82,000. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds .9%, restaurant excise tax adds .8% to our sales tax. In June, hotel excise tax is at 41.4%, restaurant excise tax is at 15.8%, with total collections up 23.5%. Budget variance here of almost 50%. So, we really budgeted conservatively for our excise taxes because we were not sure how things were going to recover from 2020, 2021. Year-to-date, hotel excise tax is up 23.4% or $16,000. Restaurant excise tax is up 10.7% or $30,000, with total collections up 13.1% or $46,000. Budget variance through June, 43.6% or $121,000 more has been collected than we budgeted in 2023. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that vendors voted to give up way back in like the 1990s, and that's to promote retail sales in Montrose. In June, we collected $61,538 or 5.4% more than we did in June of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected $311,000 or 7.2% more than we did through June of 2022, which equates to about $21,000. So with that, I'll take any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Go.
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And next up from you also is our second quarter budget review.
Thank you. Yes, the second quarter budget review, so we're halfway through the year, and in your packets is memo plus some financials that I included. Everything looks to be in order. There's nothing there that jumps out at us as being an issue. As you can see, the revenues for the general fund, which is our main source of revenue, we do not certify a mill levy, is coming in very well. A little bit of a dip from '21 to '22, '22 to '23, but I think that's kind of a leveling off of inflation a little bit, so. Those are my thoughts. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It doesn't look like we do, but just like I pointed the public to other staff earlier tonight, I will say that if any members of the public have any questions, these reports are in our packet tonight, and you are happy to entertain. Anyone from the public can call and say, hey, can you explain this more to me, or this more to me? I was looking, I don't quite understand, and you're happy to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the third staff report tonight is a proposed final distribution of assets from the estate of Deborah Hawk and settlement release, and this is our Assistant City Attorney, Matt Maggiaro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here on a staff report on a proposed final distribution of assets from an estate. It's Montrose District Court probate case number 2021 PR 30167, just for the record. Staff is bringing this before council tonight in order to obtain client authority and direction to sign the estate closing documents, essentially. It's associated with the final closing of the estate of Hawk. There's a settlement and release, a proposed agreement for, from us as direct beneficiaries of the estate of the estate liabilities as part of the final closing. I'll give a background, a kind of executive summary, because I don't believe this has been discussed in a public session. This case, just giving a high-level summary here, Deborah Hawk, the decedent, died December 18, 2021. She was domiciled in Montrose County. There was some litigation that occurred to sort out her estate planning documents. Another case was filed that is concluded. The Montrose Animal Shelter was a 20% direct beneficiary of this estate in her last-in-time will. To date, the city has received disbursements from this estate, from the personal representative of the estate, in the amount of $100,914.94. The estate had some real property interests that eventually were, had to be sold. So the estate sold the townhouse at 209 Crosswood Circle here in Montrose on or around April of 2023. That was the last kind of remaining big asset of the estate that they needed to take care of. They sold that for approximately $275,000. Staff has reviewed the final accounting filed by the personal representative, Ms. Pirelli, by and through council, in the case on June 19, 2023. It did appear to be in order. There were no beneficiary objections appearing in the docket, which I've reviewed during the penancy of this council meeting. As a 20% beneficiary, we stand to receive the amount in cash of $74,656.63, that is new money on top of what we've already received. This would be, in addition to that, there'd be a $20,000 promissory note from Carl Hawk, payable at 5% interest and due in full in two years. It'd be paying installments. On inquiry to the PR's attorney, I've learned that the, that was intended basically to secure a debt that the decedent was owed by Mr. Hawk for loans payable and made during her life. After the expenses attended to the sale of the real property, legal expenses, settlement of allowed claims, there were about nine of them, give or take, creditor claims against the estate, and payment to the estate personal representative, the total of $94,656.63 represents the final distribution that the Montrose Animal Shelter, as a 20% beneficiary, would stand to obtain from this estate. It's the legal department's recommendation to sign the release form, or direct staff to sign the release form and accept the final settlement amount. I would just note in concluding comments, thanks to the Hawk family for the just incredible generosity that was shown here by these disbursements. It's a tribute to Ms. Hawk's obvious care and concern for animals and their care, their humane care, that's reflected in these distributions to the animal shelter, which were an unbudgeted windfall, around $195,000. With that, I can take any questions. I don't anticipate a vote, but I do kind of need a nod, head nod one way or another on what we are to do.
Does council have any questions? And does council have any objection to staff signing this paperwork to finalize this? Thank you. And yes, thank you very much. It was very nice of Mrs. Hawk to think of our animal shelter and our community's animals in her will, and I trust that our animal shelter will use these funds wisely and thank her again for them. Okay, that would conclude staff reports, unless anyone from staff has something else. Okay, so then we'll go to council comments. You all are unmuting your microphones, so we'll just go down in order. Do you have anything? Okay.
I'd just like to comment on what a fine job I thought the staff did with Funk Fest. We had staff, volunteers, and even the police department out there, and they all did a nice job, and it seemed like it went very well. Thank you.
That's what you were going to say, huh? I'll elaborate a little, because it really was an extensive event, and so, the city's Office of Business and Tourism made a, played a huge role in making the Funk Fest happen. The Water Sports Coordinator, Earl Richmond, and all of his volunteers kept the river participants safe. Montrose Surf and Cycle for partnering with the city to keep things running smoothly. Special shout-out to John Sullivan, our Public Works, and the Montrose Police Department for all their hard work. The Funk Fest also operates because a number of volunteers come out and help the city run the event, so thank you to all of those volunteers. The Rec District, the Montrose Children's Museum, props to you. Magical Mountain Face Painting and a Time to Dance hosted the kids' activities. The sponsors for the event, the main sponsors, were Smithfly, Latitude, Compass Medical Center, and Renewal by Anderson. The Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club hosted the bar at River Bottom Park, and Montrose Rotary Club hosted the bar at the amphitheater.
Black Canyon Rotary.
Black Canyon Rotary Club, thank you. All the vendors that participated at both the amphitheater events and the River Bottom events. Dave Bowman for assisting the city by taking great care of the band, and the production crews that helped make the magic happen at the music events, the concert design innovations at the amphitheater, and Valkyrie Productions at the River Bottom concerts. And in conclusion, this is a really great event, and I wouldn't even have this list if, Katie, sure. Am I pronouncing Katie's last name sure? Sure. Katie, Katie is a fantastic, a fantastic woman, and she was the main coordinator of the two-day event, and she did a great job, and she hopefully is home resting by now. But I think all of council would agree with me that it takes this whole community to make this great event happen. There were probably people that I didn't get a chance to name who played a part, and we thank you all. It's one of the biggest events that the city puts on throughout the year, and thanks to everyone for making it happen. Anything else? Okay, then with that, we can be adjourned.
Make the motion adjourned.
Thank you. So moved, we're adjourned.